Let's go ahead and get started.
Let's just get started. Thanks, Tim from the Finance Committee for joining. Definitely appreciate it. You're always on time and on point. So,
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman, for starting on time. Thanks, Chris and Lindsay, for being here, and we could just go ahead and get started with Chris.
Sure. Let me make sure I turn this up so I can. Um, I'm gonna do some screen sharing here, so you can see what we've been up to. About this time last year, and just for background purposes, DPW is in charge of all city vehicles except for police and fire. We're responsible for maintenance, replacement, et cetera, for all of the vehicles. In the city with that list, uh, also is about four hundred and sixty-three true vehicles and about a hundred and fifty pieces of equipment. Trailers, uh, you know, leaf blowers, the bigger leaf blowers, et cetera. So a little bit over six hundred. We've divested ourselves a little bit from the pool department. They receive money from different places for purchase of vehicles. However, we still know all of their maintenance, which is, I believe, about seventy or so vehicles on their side. So, uh, we've had kind of an irregular program for replacing vehicles. We did a replacement of, of about two million dollars or so in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, and then in two thousand and nineteen, we did, uh, I want to say it was a little bit under a million dollars. Uh, but really, we're trying to get back into a program where we are, um, uh, kind of putting together some strategic planning. So this time last year, I started to meet with TJ and Lindsay. And what we've developed is kind of what you see in front of you here is a spreadsheet that talked about, uh, uh, what we needed to do. Now, just from a date standpoint, up at the top, I basically say immediately fiscal year twenty-three. The discussion we were having early on was that, uh, we would, we were gonna evaluate when we were gonna buy vehicles. And the possibility at that point wasn't gonna be, we were gonna be buying anything until fiscal twenty-three. So what we went, did is went through an analysis of all the vehicles, determined what year, A, the value of the vehicle now, and what year moving forward over the next five fiscal.
Do you make it any bigger, a little bit?
Uh, sure. And let me just kind of focus in if we can.
Okay.
And so up at the top, we did fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then I have a column that's liability past twenty-seven, which is basically vehicles that are not, do not need to replace within a five-year period. So for, just to scale over for each of the departments, you know, the assessors, TJ, Health Development, and all the way down. This is their current vehicle that they have. Uh, this column is department, what type of vehicle they have, current mileage at the time, which was probably a year ago. What it was, type, what year, and what type of car it is. So Assessor is a two thousand and thirteen Ford Focus. Uh, that's got a hundred and eight thousand miles on it. So we then, uh, went into the mode of looking at every one of these vehicles and did a five-year, uh, lookout, uh, of what we wanted to do. Uh, went back and forth with all the departments, and really what is in yellow, highlighted in yellow, is what we needed to do immediately. And for purposes of this discussion, those are the vehicles that were part of the eight-point-one million that was approved, um, beginning of February, I believe it was, at the last council meeting. So that's just highlighting for my purposes, those vehicles that we are replacing. Uh, and the idea is most of them are gonna be traded in. We may keep some, um, uh, passenger vehicles just to have as pool cars. But basically, we're gonna be doing a trade-in. So when we went through, we went through each of the departments, uh, health, and then when you get into code, obviously, they have a lot more vehicles. Parks has a ton, uh, obviously a lot. Personnel has one, facilities, and then DPW, uh, as well. And just that these highlighted in red, just I was doing those because those are dump trucks, and we were going through an analysis of them a week or so ago. Uh, this gray happens to be a bunch of actual plows, so we, we, it shows up as a piece of equipment. But then we went into DPW solid waste because that money is in the enterprise fund. So what we ended up doing, and just as I'm scrolling to the bottom, that happens to be school, for each of the departments, came up with a, a value, if I can get this right, that for each department, that basically set under the general fund, we have about twenty-four and a half million dollars in value of vehicles. And what we need to buy based upon our, uh, projections each of the years moving forward. And then the idea would be, next year, I then go out to fiscal twenty-eight, and then the next year fiscal twenty-nine. We also had to do the same thing, simply because it's separate money. This line that's underneath here, public work, or excuse me, enterprise fund, because that money is kind of different sometimes. And that's about eleven million dollars. So we have a total of about thirty-six million dollars. Uh, and what's important about that is that we were trying to look at kind of an average, and I can't remember who asked me this at the council meeting, but like, you know, an average age or an average value of a vehicle. You know, we kind of say that an average vehicle may last, say, ten to fifteen years, and I used fifteen years. And if you just divide the number by fifteen for years, you come up with over two million dollars that we should be spending every year just to keep up with replacements. And when we miss a year, that's when we start to run into problems. So that was our whole discussion with finance on there. And the, the next column that we had down here was really each department. But this is just number of vehicles. You know, so right away, we were gonna be ordering eighty-two, and then eleven, that is enterprise fund, so ninety-three total. And then what would be done for each of the fiscal years moving forward. Now, the other part of the discussion we had at the city council was about bonding versus financing and putting it in the budget. So this is a little small, because I just want to show it, um, at the scale for right now. We took those same dollar figures that we showed before for each department. And then what I started to look at, what we're financing over five years, what the bottom line number needed to be in the budget moving forward. Now, where it says fiscal twenty-three per purchase, and I have zeros there, that was because we made the decision to do it as bonding. Uh, but as we were doing the discussion on there, I had that five-point-whatever million dollars divided by five years. So that number was like one point something million dollars. So that was the idea in the discussions with finance, to turn it into, bond the money for this current year, and then moving forward, it would be put into the budget. Uh, right now, uh, we have in the general fund, a, two more payments of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then what I did for each subsequent year is just divide that number, what we were gonna buy by five. So next year, uh, in, even though it says fiscal twenty-four, we're kind of moving up a year. Our budget line item, and this number here does not include in interest. We're getting interest on leasing, when I say leasing, financing, excuse me, between one and two percent. So the number's relatively small. So in the coming fiscal years, these would be the numbers that would appear in the budget under the general fund for, for leasing moving forward. And it would end up being the exact same thing here for the enterprise fund for those vehicles. Enterprise fund, we bought some last year, uh, and the problem with the enterprise fund is just that the vehicles are so expensive. They're three hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. So when we buy one, or excuse me, we buy three, that's a million dollars. So, uh, that ends, that, that money adds up much, much quicker. So what I then did is take these totals to discuss in the budget side, and the total for the enterprise fund to discuss on the budget side. And then looking at the total city liability of what we needed to, what we need to look at as moving forward. That turned into discussions with TJ and Lindsay, and, uh, uh, then they had discussions, obviously, bound coun, bound council, et cetera, et cetera, as to what would be the best methodology moving forward. And that was why they came up with the discussion, or excuse me, the decision of doing the eight-point-one million. Now, our number here says seven-point-three. In that eight-point-one, there was also a purchase for the fire department. So that's completely separate, but the bond was all put together, uh, for both. But I'm not, even though I'm being a team player, Lindsay, uh, we're managing, we're managing their, their purchase just from a procurement standpoint and tracking. So their number is rolled into that, which is why you get to the eight-point-one million. Uh, but our goal, and we are starting to order stuff this week, uh, on our side, because we had to go out and get our bids uh, for certain types. Our first thing we're ordering are dump trucks. The second thing we're ordering next week will be trash vehicles. And then we move into a lot of three-quarter ton pickups, a lot of half-ton pickups, uh, a lot of, um, vans, uh, of cargo van types for facilities, and then passenger vehicles, uh, for code and departments like that that do a lot of it. So this is kind of the background that what we are using for a five-year plan. And, uh, the goal is, is that when we do our budgets this year, that, you know, these, these, uh, uh, numbers that I'm kind of highlighting in red will be the number, will be the number that will show up on this year's, but actually, when I say this year's, I'm talking about when we go into fiscal twenty-three for a second purchase that will happen, uh, later this year after July first. Um, so this is basically.
So.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we bonded for FY twenty-three, but the red amount is going in FY twenty-three budget?
Yeah, because initially what we thought is we weren't going to be purchasing anything until we started fiscal year twenty-three. But with the bond money moving forward, and based upon the finances position with regard to financial condition, we've kind of moved everything up a year. Uh, so we made the immediate purchase. So even though I accidentally hit a key there, which I don't want to screw.
So, does that give us any cost savings to move everything up a year?
Yes. If we were not issuing debt this year, we would have waited till FY twenty-three because we would not have wanted to issue short-term debt and pay interest on that, um, this year. So because we're issuing debt this year, we were able to get, and I, I remember talking about this with you guys at council. Um, this was like a last-minute addition to the current issuance we have going on. So we will have the cash on hand in order for Chris to be able to order and pay for the vehicles in this fiscal year. Otherwise, we would have had to wait until FY twenty-three.
So cash on hand means we don't have to pay the interest?
Cash on hand is we have the issuance of the long-term debt, the bond, we'll still pay interest on the bond.
On the bond, but not.
Yeah, we're not gonna have to pay interest on the short-term debt.
On the lease or whatever.
Correct. Uh, well, the lease is different, but the ban, we would have had to ban, um, short-term money until we bonded. We still would have had to bond long-term, but we would have had an extra year of paying interest on the money. So we wouldn't have wanted to do that, and we would have made Chris wait till FY twenty-three.
And so, I think what I'm asking is the six hundred thousand, is that six hundred, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand and the seven something, um, at the bottom.
So we can see.
Are those, is, are we getting a cost savings from putting that money in FY twenty-three budget? Like, why are we moving that up a year? That's what I don't understand.
Um, you mean, why are we not building the FY twenty-four vehicle needs into FY twenty-three?
Into FY twenty-four.
The plan is to build it into FY twenty-four. Well, Chris's plan is to build it into FY twenty-four.
No, no, my plan, my plan is to put that in twenty-three.
Oh, in twenty-three?
Yes, to start, to start that next purchase.
Oh, okay.
Fiscal year twenty-three, for the simple reason is that, I mean, this is my discussion with TJ, Lindsay, was rather than waiting a year, knowing that the city is in a little bit of a better financial position now with unknown out for five years, it would be better to that process now.
Yeah, I mean, I, sorry, I misunderstood that that's what you were saying. Um, so is there any cost savings in doing that? Is that what you're asking, Tracy?
Yes.
Um.
Because what if vehicle prices, gas and everything go down in FY twenty-four? And we could have the savings in FY twenty-four, because it looks like we're heading that way, um, in a recession. So vehicles, gas, everything. And does this include like gas and maintenance in these prices? No? Okay.
No, that's separate in, in our budget.
That's separate in the budget, okay. Um, um, I know we're in a better financial situation, but I think that the prices of vehicles and things may go down in the future, so I don't understand why we would put that in the budget for FY twenty-three if we already got FY twenty-three vehicles covered by the bond.
I was gonna ask the same thing about the, the, how we're probably predicting the cost out over the next five years. Are we using today's numbers, or are we using numbers estimated for then? Because I don't understand how we'd make that prediction with the state of the vehicle market.
Well, the, 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 the way that we purchase vehicles is not kind of the way that the standard person purchases a vehicle. We are buying off of state contracts, the prices are fixed. So when I want to buy a passenger vehicle, whether it's an Equinox or, I'll say Equinox, that price right now is fixed through state contract, and the price.
Is it fixed through, is it fixed through that term?
Right, is it fixed annually, or is it fixed over a five-year period? How is it fixed?
It is, it is a fixed price that is fixed, I want to say, once every eighteen months or so. And we are in the lag period, which actually is getting better prices now than we will probably get in a year. Uh, because I was very, very surprised when we started getting prices of, and I'll use Equinox as an example. If you go to a Chevy dealership to buy one now, it might be forty grand, where we're getting a price of, say, like thirty-two because we're buying it through the state contract.
Because the contract was negotiated before the shortage.
Correct, correct.
We're on the tail end of the eighteen months. So it may, they may renegotiate next year, and it could.
Higher.
I see. Okay.
Or it could renegotiate lower because the market may be heading toward a recession, and that's gonna, um, drive some of the vehicle costs down. Um, I just talked to TJ this morning about, um, the recession and things, and how, how it's trending. And so, um, I don't know if I can support it going in FY twenty-three budget because there's so many other initiatives, and we did, like, put the bond forward. Um, I don't know, can we split it in half? Can we, is there anything else, like, anything else DPW need, like, that's pressing besides this, like? Hmm.
Well, i- i- in, I mean, my preference, these numbers stay in the, I mean, we're doing the budgets now. So, you know, we're, we're doing our side on our analysis of budgets for next year. My goal is that these numbers go in the budget. If we split it, which, again, that's completely up to the council's, uh, uh, discretion. If we split it, then it just becomes, uh, in, hmm, then it just becomes going through that list of fifty-two vehicles and determining what the need is for each one, you know, what, what's the real need, but I, I don't like to use the word real need, but the need of, uh, you know, is something falling up that needs to be addressed. So my preference is obviously that it stays the, so I can stay on a, a standard schedule, but, uh, obviously, that's a, uh, a council decision.
I just feel, I'm sorry, I just wanted to show you what we have for. Say something, but I just feel like we agreed to this bond, um, and it doesn't feel like it's giving us any cost savings outside of the interest for the FY twenty-three budget, because we're still going to transfer some of the estimated FY twenty-four costs to the FY twenty-three. And, I mean, there's just a lot of need in the community too. Um, and so when I look through the lens of the needs of the community, I feel like we took care of the FY twenty-three vehicles. What else can this, um, how much is it, like, one-point-three million, one-point-four million be used for? That's just how I look at it, but I understand what you're trying to do too.
Yeah, and that's, you know, in setting up the five-year plan, uh, you know, which, obviously, once we have this order in, I gotta go out another fiscal year uh, on replacement. So once we do that, but, you know, the whole intent today was kind of show you the background of how we put together the five-year plan, where we came up with the numbers in and moving forward. We probably for the last five or six months, when I say we, not just the DPW, but all the departments, we probably have ten percent of the fleet that's not operational. Uh, you know, we're driving dump trucks that are nineteen ninety-three, ninety-fours, uh, so we, you know, we're trying to replace those, get those back up to speed. And one of the.
How many are that old, Chris? How many are that, how many are that old?
Let me. These ones here in red, uh, ninety-six, a ninety-six, ninety-six, ninety-four, ninety-two, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-three. Uh, and then, you see, there's a nineteen eighty-nine, uh, these two thousand and sevens, uh, internationals, just they're not, haven't been good trucks for us. But, and as you can see by the years, you know, uh, these things are old, you know, we got vans that are ninety-nines and two thousands.
When are, when are those in the red gonna be purchased? Are they gonna be purchased?
Those are being purchased, those are being purchased right now with the bond that was approved.
Okay, so then those will be taken care of.
Right, and that's, that's where I was going with the next ones, is that the next ones that we have, that would be in this next, uh, uh, year become, you know, they're, we're talking about two thousand and nines, two thousand and threes, uh, you know, just, uh, DPW, big stuff, the, a lot, not a lot of big stuff, uh, inside of DPW per se next year or the, the next purchase, uh, and I was just moving forward into solid waste. Uh, solid waste, one, two, three, four, uh, we're ordering three trucks with the money that we have now. And then the idea is that we would order one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, with the money that we would have in next year's budgets. Those vehicles are two thousands and thirteens and fourteens. Those have eight-year, uh, uh, life. That's it, eight to nine years. Uh, I'm gonna say the three trucks that we're buying right now, uh, are replacing trucks that are just dead. And I have three others that are just dead right now that we're not replacing or, or fixing because these are fixes that are forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, uh, you know, whether we're talking about new engines, new bodies, uh, because the bodies on these things are just, you know, they just don't last, um, with what we have to do. But, you know, for the whole, whole city, you know, uh, you know, it's a lot more in parks and a lot more in, uh, code enforcement, and there's a lot, lot, there's less big stuff and more smaller stuff. In general, a lot of stuff we're buying now is a lot bigger, uh, in general, whether it's us, parks, uh, a lot more of the bigger style equipment that's been put off for years.
Uh, Chris, how much, uh, of the equipment that's being purchased in the upcoming fiscal year, and then throughout the course of the plan, is, uh, you know, heavy machinery, and how much of it can be used for plowing?
Uh, we have twenty-two, I'm gonna say full-size dump trucks that we use for plowing, sanding, salting. Uh, all of our pickups, uh, that we probably have eighteen to twenty of those are all outfitted with, uh, with plow rigs. And most of those pickups are what our inspectors are using, because they're also doing, uh, plowing and assisting and things like that. And then there's probably three or four other vehicles that have plow rigs on them as well. We have some smaller dumps and things like that. So during snowstorms, they all become active, uh, with twenty full-size trucks, uh, twenty or so, uh, pickups as well. Uh, Parks, or excuse me, Facilities has a lot more pickups. They don't use really any big equipment with regard to plowing. They have a vendor who does all their facilities, but they also do a lot of their own stuff as well. And they probably have about thirty trucks, uh, bigger-sized pickups that have plows on them as well.
They, they plow the parks, the, the municipal buildings with that?
Yeah, there's a vendor, uh, that does like most of the schools and a handful of the city's facilities. And then, uh, the, the facilities department does a lot on their own. Uh, you know, for example, somebody plows our Tapley Street building, uh, you know, so somebody comes out there with a pickup, and somebody comes out to City Hall, and somebody comes out to, you know, the police department and the fire department, all of those as well.
But that, that somebody is a Parks Department employee, or that somebody is a vendor?
Facility, well, it's, it's a little bit of a mix. Most of the schools, I, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsay, I think it's just the schools that the vendor does. Uh, yeah, I think those vendors just do the schools, and Facilities takes care of all the other buildings, whether you're talking about libraries and.
Municipal buildings.
It's in police, fire, et cetera.
So with, with the five-year purchase plan, will we have a net increase on vehicles that can be used for plowing?
Well, I'll have, I'll have a net in, increase of ones that run, uh, because right now I probably have five plows that just do not run. Uh, those older, those older Macs just don't run anymore. They, they're just sitting. Uh, so, you know, and during storms, for, for this year, I've only been able to put out fifteen or sixteen of our own. Uh, so that's kind of been the, the problem that we've been running into.
That's helpful. Okay.
Oh, um, I'm looking at line thirty-seven, three-twenty-four, and it's a Mac, a nineteen eighty-eight. Why are we waiting till twenty-five for that purchase?
Say that, could you say that one again?
It's a RD six-nine OP, it's line ending in three-twenty-four. It's a public works.
Twenty-four.
Nine eighty-eight. Why are we waiting until?
That is a, uh,
So I would love to see all these nine, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I think that is a, it is not, that's, that's in solid waste.
That's Chris's favorite dump truck. He can't let it.
Something, it's antique, I'm like eighty-eight.
It's not a dump. I think that's a, I may be wrong on the vehicle, but I think that is a vehicle that's at the landfill. Uh, that kind of has some limited uses. It runs, uh, for what we use out there. And, um, I'm trying to remember if it's a, I think it's like a, um, kind of like a crew cab type of a small dump, uh, that does stuff at the landfill.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a, on the, it's not an on-the-street trash collection truck.
Yeah, so I'm really happy that you're getting rid of a lot of the nineteen, um, nineteen nineties vehicles.
So are our drivers.
And that you'll have five more plows on the road. That is a definitely, um, a benefit for next year. Um, and I got good feedback on the snowplowing this year. Um, they thought I did it because they were complaining to me, and I was like, you're welcome.
Yeah, take credit, take credit. That's all, you gotta take the credit.
They was like, oh, I complained to you like three times, and I forgot to send them to you, Chris. But the people did a good job on long terraces, and my mom used to live over there, and they were like, you did it. And I was like, yeah.
Tracy, take credit.
But anyways, I just wanted to tell you the job. I know you don't hear all the bad stuff, and, um, you should hear the good things as well. Let's see that. Um, Chris, it's hard to put the, um, extra money in FY twenty-three, but. Tim? Tim, you got, you got a question, comment?
Yep, I just was on mute. Um, yeah, so if I could just, I didn't say anything yet. I'm kind of following, follow along. Um, so Chris, basically, I'm just gonna summarize and tell me if I'm right or wrong. Um.
You're wrong.
I'm wrong about a lot of things. I'm wrong about a lot of things.
I'm getting a jump on it. Yeah.
So, so we bonded the eight point one million and to get kind of back going again on this after not buying vehicles for a while. And even though we bonded it and we still want to put, I don't know what the amount is, but um, some, some money to purchase vehicles in the twenty-three budget. Is that?
Yeah, yeah. The idea, and the idea is, is more from a uh, obviously number one, from a need standpoint, the need is there, but number two, from a financial standpoint of uh, you know, whether it's, whether it's, you know, and again, I, I never like to speak for Lindsay and TJ on the money side of it, but.
Okay.
That we are in a much better position financially as a city to start that purchase now versus running forward a couple of years and then finding out we're in bad shape. Uh, and I think the, the one thing that my discussion was is that we start to have a little bit of a problem financially, if we need to skip a year uh, while I'm not happy about it.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I, I, I followed most of it. I just, so once we get back on the twenty-three budget is the idea then, then we would put, you know, a similar amount of money in each of these. It would be back on an annual investment type of basis. Is that the?
Correct. That's, that's what the plan is. Yes.
Okay. And, and the other part, my questions are more on macro level about this. Um, you know, are they um, why, how do we, besides COVID, was there any other reason that we fell off the replacement plan that we had before? Did we just not have a good year financially? So we didn't buy vehicles or um, because it, hasn't it been three or four years or something since we bought vehicles?
Yeah, we bought, we bought some um, seventeen and then some in nineteen. Uh, and then we bought some trash trucks last year, or excuse me, it might've been twenty, a fiscal year twenty where the, the uh, showed up. Uh, so uh, it was just, unfortunately, I know my discussions with TJ and Lindsay, it's just, it becomes a big number. And you know, trying to, then trying to figure out whether we want to do it as a bond, whether we wanted to use, whether it's free cash or whether it's uh, financing and we had fine, you know, we also had some old financing stuff that was still on the books. You know, that came off a couple of years ago. So uh, not, not to speak for them, but it was, you know, hey, we can save a few dollars for this fiscal year. Um, you know, again, I don't like to speak for them, but it, you know, it was really a finance uh, decision at that point.
Yeah. So sometimes, so we, so just like everything else in life, you put a plan in place, it works for two or three years and then something's wrong in some other part of your plan and you can't execute that part of the plan. That happens all the time. It sounds like that.
Unfortunately, yeah, now we get to a crisis point. So.
Now we get to a point. Okay. Um, and obviously COVID made it worse, but um, anyway, um, okay. That was my question. I'm, I, I follow along. I'm all set. Thank you with Tracy.
Thank you. I think we made it better. I'm sorry. We just got extra money. I think we made it better. Um, for purchases, not like family-wise and sicknesses, but with money-wise, finance, financial-wise, um, I think it made it better. And his plans are always um, looked at every year because I, I used to do the budget for you, Chris, so I know. Like that every year. Um, and I just feel.
I will say, counselor, Chris does ask for three, four million dollars every year.
Okay.
The enterprise bond, the general bonds, like them, Chris.
A lot of things shy is, shy isn't one of my things. That's.
All right.
I like the position that we in. Counselor, what are you feeling?
Um, I wanted to, I wanted to pivot uh, once we finish the, the strict financial piece uh, to talk a little bit about the sustainability goals, but I didn't want to take away from that unless if you guys have more questions. I, 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 I have my head wrapped around the plan. Uh, I will, I will think about the FY twenty-three piece.
I think I got to think about it more. You could send that spreadsheet.
If you could definitely send that spreadsheet.
I'm, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
Can you send the spreadsheet to us?
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
And so if, if folks don't mind a quick pivot, because I know we're, we're also getting on it. I think a few of us have a five-thirty as well. Um, so I, I wanted to talk about this in the context of the climate action plan. Um, because I know that in facilities, we've made really big strides around our energy efficiency. Uh, our contracts relative to uh, where we attain uh, various power contracts. Uh, and so that, that's where a lot of our progress has been made. Um, I'm not quite sure if the climate action plan at this time actually uh, specifically addresses our municipal fleet, but it's definitely something we should think about. Um, and I think especially with regards to uh, the passenger vehicles that we're purchasing. Um, so I know we had a sort of macro conversation about the issue with electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And I will say that there is a lot of federal money out there for electrical, electric vehicle charging. Um, but even in the more short term, when we're pricing these on the contracts, Chris, are there uh, contracts that reflect uh, pricing for hybrids uh, beyond just straight gas vehicles?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's the, the state contracts that we have and when I say state countries, it's like four or five different ones. Uh, they all, they, they have all, all sorts of vehicles in there. And we have kind of been going back and forth through the state a little bit and with ever source uh, about talking about uh, charging stations and things like that and trying to figure out. Cause it kind, it's kind of one of those things. It's like you kind of need the charging stations before you buy the cars. Uh, and it's like, okay, how many charging stations? Where do we put them? And oh, uh, because we have obviously a lot of vehicles around the city that are stored and probably more, I, I, at one point, at one location, it's probably more at Tapley Street than anywhere else. Um, you know, so it's just a matter of trying to figure out where we can put all those to make sure that we can maximize the purchase end of it when we do it. As I said in the meeting, I don't want to buy, you know, I don't want to have five charging stations uh, at Tapley Street when I have fifty cars that need to come in at four o'clock and have to get charged.
Charging stations for hybrids though.
Excuse me?
You don't need charging stations for hybrids though.
No, no. And most, a, a lot of the ones that we are uh, will be purchasing uh, the passenger style ones, we've been, uh, the last couple, we've had to buy a little onesie, twosie here or there. Uh, we've been getting the uh, hybrid Nissan Kicks uh, on that. So we've been getting a lot of those passenger vehicles now have that capability. Uh, and then the next step would be go to pure uh, you know, EVs. So.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see a breakdown on, uh, because I, I, I'm glad we had the financial piece because I understand now too the plan to purchase over the five years. So we have a few orders we'll be putting in. I'd like to see a breakdown on each order uh, of how many are, are uh, gas, fully gas, hybrid and electric over the five years each time you do it. I'd like you to forward that to us. Like I'd like.
I'll send you this. I'm sorry, Jesse.
No, yeah, go, go ahead. We're on the same.
I'll, I'll send you this list and then probably in a month or so I'll follow up because what we're doing, the, as I said, we're, we're ordering the stuff in steps because I'm trying not to overwhelm certain vendors uh, that we're buying. And probably the last thing that we will be buying over the next month, month and a half is going to be the passenger vehicles. So when I have that list back of what we're getting, that I can share it with you at that point.
And yeah, I mean, if, when we look at our, um, you know, we have to be, we have to be reducing emissions everywhere and, and as much progress as we've made in facilities. Um, when you look at the, the breakdown of, of emissions, really our, our major source is transportation uh, in the city and that, that impacts everything from the asthma rate, uh, you know, to the, the summers getting hotter and, and everything. So uh, the more that we, then you know, the more steps that we can take reasonably, the better. The, the one thing that I always make clear to folks at the state level and, and, and when I get a chance at the federal level, right, is we're not going to do it on, on the backs of the people of Springfield though, right? We're not going to be, we're not going to say, well, we're going to spend extemporaneous amounts of money that we don't have uh, to solve these problems that you put upon us. You know what I mean? So there is also a piece for the state and feds to say, you know, they need to incentivize uh, or make it cheaper for us to make our money go further with hybrid and with electric vehicles. And that's a conversation we can have with them about, say, hey, we have a five-year plan. You know, we'd like you to start kicking some money in so we can take our bond money and do what we can do. And you make up the difference because we're not, we're not going to make the taxpayers of Springfield responsible for solving the problem that was put upon them. But I'd like us to be in a position, to be in a position uh, to get the vehicles, be able to purchase them if we can bring in that additional money as well.
And just uh, not to take that uh, discussion a little further. When you have a chance over the next two days, can you give me a call? Because I want to follow up with you on the uh, uh, you were looking to put together a meeting uh, talking about LEDs and, and State Street. If you could give me a call, because I, the LED stuff, I need to have a little bit of a discussion with you uh, on that uh, before we would have that, before we would have that meeting. So whenever you get time in the next two.
I'm going right into a five-thirty right after this, but I, I will call you tomorrow if you're around.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Nine too, but I don't.
You can, yeah, you can call all you want.
Yeah.
That's fantastic because I get complaints about state street lights every C three meeting, every one. So I hope y'all can work that out.
Oh, I think it was two separate topics. It was the LED light conversion council Whitfield and then. But yes, state street, there, there are a ton of lights.
They go out like all the time. Like I know that they get fixed and then like a few weeks later they're out again.
Historic, the historic lights, the problem is they have to special order the bulbs. From like California.
It's becoming a real pain. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I bet. Um, just to pivot really quick, any information on the infrastructure bill?
Um, infrastructure bill, we.
We don't have to discuss it. You could just say yes or no. We could set up another meeting.
No, it's, it's, it's foggy at best. Uh, uh, there's going to be some sort of application process, but what I'm, what my gut feeling is telling me, I am seeing the state create their own projects i- all around the state and that includes the city of Springfield. Uh, and it was what my fear was is that even though work will get done in the city of Springfield, that we'll go through the mass DOT. Just in the city field, there's five bridge projects that have been approved in the last three months. Uh, in the city of uh, Liberty Armory Rotary, uh, Dwight and Karoo Street. So uh, New North End Bridge, uh, Long Meadow Curve. So there's all these projects that the state, in my opinion, is kind of gobbling up that money. But one of the, that is happening is the governor put forth uh, about a week or ten days ago, a supplemental budget uh, that will hopefully uh, give us another, another three point six million in chapter ninety style money. And I say style because it's two different things, but it's basically a tied-together program that we would probably be finding out in the next uh, two weeks or so. That will allow us to accelerate uh, a bunch more paving program with. That's one of the good things. And then completely secondarily, mass DOT, I had a meeting with them today. That was what we'll be talking about tomorrow a little bit of, of a bunch of initiatives that they want to do in the city of, I, I'm not going to say big scale or small scale, but very mid-scale about addressing things like, you know, State Street, Parker Street, Page Boulevard of stuff that I've been barking at them about for years without having to reconstruct the corridor for five million dollars. What can we for, you know, a half million of state money? And we've just started those meetings today to do things uh, to try to figure out how to stem uh, speeding.
Okay. That's great. Great news.
Is that three point two million on top of chapter ninety?
Yeah, uh, yeah, because what they do in the uh, supplemental budget, he's got the a hundred million statewide for additional chapter ninety for fiscal twenty-two. And then a hundred million statewide for what he calls uh, winter weather, uh, which has happened before. Uh, and at that level, we end up with about one point eight and one point eight. So it ends up being three point six.
All right. Any additional questions, counselors?
I'm good on vehicles. I had a quick off, one-off for Chris, similar to the thing. What, what are we starting pothole repair, Chris?
I'm sorry.
Pothole repair. When are we, when are we filling potholes?
We're doing, we're doing stuff now. It's all with cool patch. Uh, as soon as regular material is available, uh, probably, I'm going to say the twentieth to the twenty-fifth of this month, we start doing it permanently.
Is there a reason they seem worse this year?
I say yes, because simply because we, we have a lot, a lot of cold weather without a lot of partic- uh, precipitation. Then, and when we started to get that rain is when, two weeks ago is when everything just really started to fall apart on us. The other problem that I'm seeing is all of the uh, we're having a serious problem with uh, utility trenches and patches and trying to get them taken care of as well. So uh, you know, and with that rain that we had in, the ground is still frozen. It had no place to go but in the cracks. And so it's, it popped up real, real, real quick. Once we had that rain, probably two weeks ago when it was sixty degrees. Um, which does that. And yeah, it deteriorates real quick.
I, I hit, I hit something going down Sumner Avenue a few weeks ago. I emailed you about it and you did fill it in, but I thought, I really thought it was over. I mean, I just, I thought, I, I thought the car. And I was going twenty-five.
Wow.
Yeah, there is, they fell apart real quick.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Your knowledge is so appreciated, Chris. You really know.
Underappreciated, underappreciated.
Underappreciated. Not by me, Chris. I appreciate it. Well, I think that we can adjourn the meeting. There's no further questions. Thank you for your time.
I'll forward that information to you.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Have a good one.
Thank you.